Good evening. Welcome to the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Public Hearing and the Draft Temporary Permit for Waste Management of New Hampshire Inc. We are using the GoToWebinar platform to conduct this online hearing. My name is Barbara Dorfschmidt, and I work for the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. I will be your host for this online hearing. You will hear from me periodically throughout the hearing as I provide instructions on how you can participate, such as how to ask clarifying questions or provide oral testimony. We will turn on and describe certain webinar functions during the times of the hearing when we are soliciting questions or testimony. Please note that all attendees are muted and have no video feed. You will be able to see and hear New Hampshire DES staff, but neither we nor any other attendees can hear or see you through this online platform. The exception to this will be the times during the hearing where individual attendees are unmuted to ask clarifying questions or provide oral testimony. When attendees request to speak, we will call you one at a time and unmute you so that we and all of the attendees can hear you. Please note that even when you are unmuted and speaking with us, your video feed will not be transmitted to us or any other attendees. We and all attendees will be able to hear you but not see you. I will provide more detailed instructions on how to request to speak at the points during the hearing where we open the floor to you to ask clarifying questions or provide oral testimony. In addition to the instructions I will provide throughout the hearing, we also have Meg King of New Hampshire DES standing by to help if you need personal assistance. I will read her phone number and email address now, and we will post it on the screen intermittently throughout the hearing. You can reach Meg by phone at (603) 271-6893, That was a summary of how you will be able to participate in this hearing. Don't worry if you didn't catch it all. You will be hearing from me again later when I provide more detailed instructions. I thank you for joining us and look forward to helping you participate in this online hearing. I am now going to turn you over to our hearing officer, Mike Fitzgerald, who will get us started. Mike?
Good evening. Thank you, Barbara. For the record, it is 6:00 PM on October 21st, 2020. We are at the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services offices of 29 Hazen Drive in Concord, New Hampshire, for a public hearing on the draft temporary permit for the expansion of a solid waste landfill owned by Waste Management of New Hampshire Incorporated in Rochester, New Hampshire. I now declare the hearing to be open. My name is Michael Fitzgerald, and I have been appointed by Craig Wright, Director of the Air Resources Division of the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, to serve as the hearing officer for today's public hearing. I am the Assistant Director of the Air Resources Division. And also representing DES today here are Todd Moore, Air Permit Programs Manager; Barbara Dorfschmidt, the Operating Permits Program Manager; Sheila Rydel, NSR Program Manager; Meg King, as was mentioned previously, State Air Permit Engineer; and Alyssa Moody, who is our program assistant. As the hearing officer, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and then accordance with Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, DES is authorized to conduct this hearing electronically. Please note, there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's order. However, in accordance with the order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the hearing by telephone with additional access by GoToWebinar for this electronic hearing. All participating DES staff have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in the meeting. The meeting link is posted on the DES calendar and can also be seen at the bottom of the slide that is on your screen right now. It's rather lengthy and has a number of digits, and I will not read it. So that link is appearing on the slide right at the bottom. In order to ask questions or to provide oral testimony, you will need to join the webinar from a computer or an iOS, Android, or Windows phone mobile device. Well, the GoToWebinar platform that DES will be using for this hearing provides capability for attendees to listen in by calling a phone number provided in the registration confirmation. Those who join that way will only be able to listen. Phone audio-only attendees will not be able to ask questions or provide testimony. If you need to ask questions or provide testimony, you'll have to join the webinar. If you have written testimony, especially if it's lengthy, you can also send that to us via email. You can send that to Sheila Rydel. We'll give you her email address shortly. Then it won't be necessary to read the testimony. You can just email it to us after this hearing. This hearing will be conducted in accordance with the New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules, As required by these rules, the proceedings of this hearing are being recorded, and all who speak will be required to state for the record their name and the name of the party they represent, if any, at this hearing. This hearing is being recorded on GoToWebinar and will be posted later on the DES website. The purpose of this hearing is to provide information on the draft temporary permit and to receive public comment. Notice of this hearing was published on September 21st, 2020 in both the Union Leader and the Foster's Daily Democrat. The notice indicated that DES would accept comments on the draft permit until today, October 21st, 2020. However, we recognize that an electronic hearing format is relatively new and may be challenging for some, or that technical issues could be encountered during the hearing. For this reason, in accordance with DES Rule ENV-C205.08, closing the hearing and the record, we will keep the record open for written comments for one additional week until 4:00 PM next Wednesday, October 28th, 2020. The process for this hearing will be as follows. First, Sheila Rydel will provide a brief presentation on the draft temporary permit. If you are participating via GoToWebinar, slides will accompany Ms. Rydel's presentation. Once Ms. Rydel has finished, we will see if anyone has clarifying questions on the draft temporary permit. We will then proceed to the public testimony portion of the hearing. Barbara Dorfschmidt will first provide a brief overview on how to provide your oral testimony via GoToWebinar. We will then start to call on those wishing to testify, as well as for the next person on deck. Each person will have a five-minute maximum to speak. After four minutes, we will let you know you're approaching your time limit. We'll let you know at five minutes that you've gone over the limit. Questions will be addressed by DES to the extent possible during the hearing. However, the purpose of the hearing is to solicit and receive comments. We will only respond to clarifying questions on our presentation, not on the hearing, on the permit issues themselves. DES will address comments in our final decision. Once everyone who cares to testify has done so, I will close the hearing. If there are any questions about how we're going to proceed, Barbara can briefly go over how to do so. Otherwise, we'll proceed with Ms. Rydel's presentation. So at this point, are there any questions as to how we're going to proceed?
Okay, this is Barbara Dorfschmidt again. I'm here to provide instructions on how to ask a clarifying question. We have now enabled the GoToWebinar question function. You can now let us know if you want to ask a question just by typing and submitting your name through GoToWebinars. On the slide dot, click on the question box where it says, "Enter a question for staff." Please type your first and last name. Once this is done, press Set. You do not need to type your question into the box. We're just using this function to identify who would like to be called upon to ask a question. We will see a list of attendees who wish to ask a question, and we will call on you one at a time. I will state the name of the first person on the list, as well as the next two names. And when I turn the floor over to you, we will unmute you, and you will be able to ask your question. For the record, we ask that you state your name before asking your question. So at this point, I'll give everybody a brief moment if anybody wants to ask a clarifying question on how we are going to be conducting the hearing. I'm not receiving any questions.
Okay, having no questions, then we will proceed with the hearing and begin with the presentation by Sheila Rydel.
Good evening. My name is Sheila Rydel, and I am a permitting engineer for the Department of Environmental Services Air Resources Division. I'm here this evening to give a presentation on a draft temporary permit for Waste Management of New Hampshire's Turnkey Recycling and Environmental Enterprises facility. The applicant is Waste Management of New Hampshire, and the facility is Turnkey Recycling and Environmental Enterprises, which operates a municipal waste landfill located on Rochester Net Road in Rochester. The draft temporary permit is for the expansion of the municipal solid waste landfill, specifically for the construction of Phases 15 through 17. The construction of Phases 15 through 17 will increase the capacity of the landfill. This is defined as a modification under EPA rules, and it triggers the applicability of New Source Performance Standards Subpart XXX. Subpart XXX is a federal rule that applies to municipal solid waste landfills that are modified after July 17th, 2014. A temporary permit is required prior to construction. The facility is currently operating under Title V Operating Permit TV-0062. The existing landfill has a capacity of 40.5 million megagrams. The landfill is currently subject to New Source Performance Standards Subpart W, which is the federal regulation that requires the collection and control of landfill gas at municipal solid waste landfills. Applicable requirements of Subpart W are included in the Title V permit. Subpart XXX, which will become applicable if the landfill is expanded, is very similar to Subpart W. There are also several existing combustion devices at the facility that are covered under the Title V permit. These include two landfill gas-fired combustion turbines, four landfill gas-fired engines, three flares, and there are also three emergency engines and two boilers that do not combust landfill gas. DES received the temporary permit application on December 31st, 2019. We then conducted a technical and engineering review, which included a regulatory applicability review to determine which state and federal air rules apply to the project. The application included an updated EMVA 1400 evaluation for regulated toxic air pollutants. The facility demonstrated compliance with this requirement. DES then prepared a draft temporary permit for public comment. During the public comment period, we received a request for hearing, and we are holding this hearing this evening to receive public comments on the draft temporary permit. This temporary permit is for the expansion of the existing solid waste landfill. The currently permitted capacity is 40.5 million megagrams. The construction of Phases 15 through 17 will increase the capacity to 55.7 million megagrams. Next, I will discuss our technical review in more detail. Landfill gas generation rates are predicted using LandGEM, which is EPA's landfill gas emissions model. Landfill gas generation rates are dependent upon the amount of waste that is accepted, the methane generation potential of the waste, and a rate constant K, which predicts how quickly the gas is produced. Landfill gas generation rates are predicted to increase with the expansion. This will result in an increase in landfill gas combustion at the facility. This graph summarizes two different landfill gas generation rate scenarios. The yellow line is the predicted landfill gas generation rate that was submitted in 2017, which did not take into account the landfill expansion. The red line shows the predicted landfill gas generation rate that was submitted in 2019 with the temporary permit application. This line does take into account the construction of Phases 15 through 17. Finally, the green line shows the actual landfill gas generation rate. And as you can see from the graph, it is less than the projected generation rates. New Source Review is a pre-construction permitting program that applies to major sources. The Prevention of Significant Deterioration Program involves permitting new and modified major sources that are located in areas meeting the National Ambient Air Quality Standards, and these are called attainment areas. Non-attainment New Source Review involves permitting new and modified major sources that are located in areas not meeting the National Ambient Air Quality Standards. These are called non-attainment areas. Currently, there are no non-attainment areas in New Hampshire. However, New Hampshire is part of the ozone transport region, and therefore, non-attainment New Source Review must be considered. Turnkey is a synthetic miner source under the Prevention of Significant Deterioration Program. Therefore, no further review was required under this program. Turnkey is an existing major source of NOx emissions under the Non-Attainment New Source Review Program. Therefore, a non-attainment New Source Review applicability analysis for this project is required for NOx emissions. An actual to projected actual test was performed to determine if the project will cause a significant emissions increase. This test calculates the difference between baseline actual emissions and projected actual emissions. The baseline period was July 2017 through June 2019, which is within the five-year period preceding the project. Projected actual emissions are based on calendar year 2026, which is the year the highest NOx emissions are predicted to occur in the five years following resumption of regular operations. And we have defined that the resumption of regular operations will be when waste is first placed in Phases 15 through 17. The projected actual emissions increase is 34.4 tons, which is less than the significance threshold. Due to the fact that the landfill expansion project does not result in a significant emissions increase, the project does not trigger non-attainment New Source Review. Reasonable possibility record keeping is required in the draft temporary permit because the projected actual NOx emissions increase from the project is more than 50% of the significance threshold. Turnkey will be required to monitor and maintain records of NOx emissions and report to DES and EPA if the significance threshold is exceeded. The temporary permit requires that all collected landfill gas must be controlled. And by control, we mean must be combusted in a flare or in an enclosed combustion device that is at least 98% efficient, or it must be routed to a treatment system that processes gas for subsequent sale or beneficial use. This is consistent with Subpart W. The modification of the landfill triggers the applicability of Subpart XXX, and there will be a transition period while Subpart W remains in effect. For the first 33 months following the applicability of Subpart XXX, Turnkey will be required to maintain records, develop plans and reports related to Subpart XXX that are detailed in the draft temporary permit, while continuing to comply with Subpart W, landfill gas collection and control requirements in the Title V permit. DES has reviewed the proposed landfill expansion against all applicable air regulations. We have determined that the facility is able to meet all state and federal air pollution control requirements. What happens next? The applicant may request a copy of all written comments and provide any additional comments. DES will review all comments and make a decision to issue or deny the temporary permit. The applicant and public have the opportunity to appeal the director's final decision to the New Hampshire Air Resources Council within 30 days after issuance of the decision.
Sheila?
Yes.
Thank you, Sheila. At this point, if anybody has any clarifying questions concerning Sheila's presentation, you may now type your name into the question box in the GoToWebinar platform. I'm not seeing any questions. Should we move on?
Give it a minute. Once again, this is for questions regarding Sheila's presentation, not your oral testimony. We'll commence that following this. We just wanted to... If you have questions about anything that Sheila presented, again, use the question function Barbara directed. Give it one more minute.
Oh, I do have somebody has a question. Emmett Soldati, and I apologize if I'm not pronouncing your name correctly. We will unmute you and ask you to speak your name before asking your question. So Emmett, we will unmute you now.
Hello, yes, thank you. This is Emmett Soldati. I just had a question. I'm over in Summersworth, about 10 miles from the Turnkey facility. A question, Sheila, on the landfill gas generation projections versus actuals. Wondering if you could just clarify, what is the rationale that the actual amount was far below the 2017 projections? And does that change what the new model should suggest with the expansion?
Maybe can you go back to the slide that shows the projections? I think... I think it's pretty common for landfill gas projection rates that are generated using LandGEM that they are higher than actual landfill gas generation rates. That's pretty typical for what we've seen at other facilities. I don't think it really has an impact on... What was the second part of your project you asked? Could you repeat the second part of it?
Well, just that how would it impact the projections? Or should we expect, at least from this, or understand from this, that the curve of the projection with the expansion would be expected to rise from today even if the actual cubic feet per minute is lower?
I think I would expect the shape of the curve to look similar, but maybe just a little lower than what we're seeing here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have no other people waiting to ask questions.
Good. And then, Sheila, you've done a very good job. So now I'll turn it over once again to Barbara Dorfschmidt, who will give a brief overview on how to provide your oral testimony. Once again, if you have lengthy testimony... We're going to be limiting people to five minutes oral testimony. If you have a lengthy testimony and it's written, and you can send that to us, you can email it to us, you can email that to Sheila. Sheila, would you give me your email address, please?
Sure. My email is Sheila, S-H-E-I-L-A dot Rydel. Rydel is R-Y-D-E-L at des.nh.gov.
Good. So again, don't feel that you need to... It's necessary to read your testimony into the record if you want to do so. Again, it must be less than five minutes, but you can certainly send it to us. So Barbara, if you'd go ahead and give it... Give your overview on providing testimony.
Sure. We will use the same system of calling on people to provide oral testimony as we use for calling on people to ask clarifying questions. There is one difference to the process for giving testimony. We are required to document contact information for all participants that give oral testimony. For this reason, we ask that if you would like to give testimony, that you type in your first and last name, the party you represent if applicable, and your mailing address into the question box. Physical addresses that you type in the question box will not be posted publicly. You do not need to speak your address out loud when giving your testimony. The question box cannot be seen by other attendees and will only be used by DES to document attendees giving testimony. The GoToWebinar question function is active, so you can now let us know if you want to provide oral testimony by typing and submitting your name and address through the GoToWebinar platform. We traditionally attempt to provide state senators and representatives the opportunity to speak first, and we would like to do so during this hearing. If you are a senator or representative and would like to be called upon early in the queue, please start your question with the name senator or representative. We will attempt to put you up front in the queue. As you are entering information to request to provide testimony, I'm going to bring up a document that you will be able to see on your screen. I will type the names of all the attendees that have requested to present oral testimony so that you may see the speaking order. I will continue to add names to the list as more people submit their names through the question box. Again, if you need technical assistance with any part of this, please do not hesitate to call Meg King, who is available by phone or email. You can reach Meg by phone at six oh three two seven one six eight nine three, or by email at Margaret, M-A-R-G-A-R-E-T dot M dot K I-N-G and E S dot N H dot gov.
All right, thank you, Barbara. So now, if you're interested in testifying, follow the procedures that Barbara just outlined. And we'll wait a minute or two to see how many we have and start to accept testimony. When we call on you, we'll be unmuting your microphone and, again, state your name. You do not have to state your address.
Give me a minute to get all the names together.
Once again, we will be extending the public comment period for one week after tonight. So if you are not able to testify, you can submit written comments to us in the next week.
Feel free to continue entering your names as we start the testimony. But right now, we have three names. And I think we can start with Jacqueline Elliott and Dana Colahan will be on deck. So Jacqueline Elliott, we will unmute you.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to offer testimony. I am Jacqueline Elliott. In two thousand and three, New Hampshire DES had as a mission to help sustain a high quality of life for all citizens by protecting and restoring the environment and public health in New Hampshire. There were guiding principles included at that time that no longer exist. Some of those principles were integrating environmental quality, public health and safety, considering the concerns and aspirations of all citizens, affording fair and equitable treatment of all New Hampshire citizens, and minimizing exposure to persistent bioaccumulative and toxic chemicals. As I noted, the current version of the mission no longer includes these principles. And I would wonder why, seeing that they are founded on known science and expected outcomes. I currently live in Waterboro, Maine, where I retired in two thousand and ten. I have been giving testimony before the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Air Source Resources Division for over two decades. I guess at this point, I can say I talk trash on both sides of the border. In two thousand and three, I was one of many members of the public giving testimony before the department on a draft Title V permit for the then-celebrated trash incinerator in my community of Claremont. Testimony involved the fact that the incinerator was installing retrofit mercury scrubbing equipment. At the time, the public, myself included, raised the question that this equipment would actually stand the risk of increasing dioxide emissions. We were assured by then-director Scott that this would not be the case. However, on the record, following the installation of that retrofit equipment, the emissions of dioxins increased more than a thousand percent from the rate in two thousand until two thousand and ten. The public knows a lot about what is going on with waste management, and I put that in quotes, and what's involved with permits. My hope is we can all approach this public hearing in the context of some candor and credibility. Permitting Wise Tree is an existing major source of toxic air pollution under environmental A sixteen, six eighteen. This has been discussed a little bit previously. This permit structure requires a tree maintains NOx emissions caps established under a Title V permit. And this is meaningful of a little background. Tree also suggests that their emissions of volatile organic compounds are what is known as a synthetic miner source. As I say, I've spent two decades before the department on such issues. And I'm trying to resist the temptation to classify a lot of this as hogwash. For a little background, a facility is only required to obtain a Title V operating permit because it is a major polluter. A little more background. A Title V permit can place restrictions on potential emission limits, which in effect allows a facility to avoid triggering the major limit. A facility may choose to accept various limitations as part of their permit. And this actually allows a facility to pollute as a major category, even categorized as a synthetic miner. All this to say this.
We're approaching five minutes. You would begin to wrap your comments.
Okay, we really do not know how much pollution this facility gives out because there's no real-time continuous emission monitoring of emissions. They are extrapolations. I want you to know that my concern, sitting here in Maine, is that pollution doesn't observe boundaries on maps and so on. And it is on the record that water containing PFAS was brought to my state for disposal. And this is not an allowable thing under the permit, but thus it was done anyway. I would say from a citizen's standpoint, whose rights have been abused and continue to be abused, any community that houses one of these facilities, the rights of the citizens have been abused, and the record is clear on that. To continue issuing permits to facilities and holding up a regulatory environment that in practice perpetuates increased waste production and utilizes disposal options that ravage our resources, defile our airlands and waters, our health and sustainability, that can't, that can't continue. Citizens are saying, no more. We're asking, I'm asking, and other citizens here tonight will be asking that this permit be denied, and that the state take serious steps to move forward in ways that will protect the rights of its citizens and conserve the resources valued by us all. Stakeholders with citizens having an equal place at the table must begin to envision, develop, and implement sustainable front-end solutions rather than relying on attempts to regulate dangerous end-of-pipe problems. New Hampshire can be a leader. We need to get away from the monopoly of the private waste industry holding us hostage to their way of doing business and take control back in our own hands and start doing things that make a lot more sense. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Elliott. Appreciate your testimony.
Next, we have Dana Colahan, and on deck is Katie LeJoy. Dana, we will now unmute you, and please remember to state your name and the party you represent if applicable.
Good evening. My name is Dana Colahan, and I work with Community Action Works, formerly Toxic Action Center. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great. I'm here today to ask you to deny Turnkey Recycling and Environmental Enterprises permit. At Community Action Works, we believe that environmental threats are big, but the power of well-organized community groups is bigger. That's why we work side by side with everyday people to confront those who are polluting and harming the health of our communities. We partner with the people who are most impacted by environmental problems, training them with the know-how. Anyone would need to make change in their own backyard because when neighbors know how to make change, you can build the power to transform our world. This proposed expansion would dramatically increase the volume of landfill gases generated, which would also increase fugitive emissions, grow the disposal capacity, and extend the life of the landfill. Based on our years of experience working with activists fighting landfills across the region, I have strong concerns about this application in three main areas. First of all, we need to move away from landfilling and incinerating trash. The EPA says that all landfills eventually leak, and what they leak is toxic. Turnkey Recycling and Environmental Enterprises is New Hampshire's largest landfill. At one thousand three hundred and thirty-eight acres already, it is the disposal site for millions of tons of trash. In addition to threats to groundwater, landfills give off potentially harmful gases and odors which often permeate surrounding neighborhoods. Companies like Turnkey make millions in profits from burning and brewing trash across New Hampshire while our public health and environment suffer. Secondly, landfills threaten our health. This landfill has ongoing problems with its leachate water. Over eighty thousand chemicals are available on the market today, and many of these are known to adversely affect human health. Landfills are vulnerable to receiving toxic waste that could jeopardize the health of those who live nearby. When dumped in landfills, products containing harmful chemicals can leak out and contaminate aquifers, vaporize into the air, and more. This expansion is set to allow increased emissions of smog-producing nitrogen oxide along with methane, carbon dioxide, and other dangerous chemicals. Even law-abiding landfills are dangerous, although illegal waste sneaks in too. For example, in two thousand and nine, property owners illegally dumped asbestos waste in the Turnkey landfill. While the property owners were forced to pay the state one hundred and ten thousand dollars for improper demolition, the asbestos waste is still in the landfill, and it is not in a certified disposal site. Another example was in two thousand and fifteen, the Turnkey landfill received the majority of soil from the Monsanto site, a formal chemical plant, in preparation for the Wynn Everett Casino. Approximately six thousand five hundred cubic yards of material containing arsenic and lead were removed from the site. These are examples of what have been caught at the Turnkey landfill, but more gets in than is discovered or is dealt with. To best protect the health and the quality of life of granite staters living near landfills as well as incinerators, construction demolition debris processing facilities, and trash transfer stations, we must be sure that harmful materials are not improperly disposed of. And lastly, we need to create a plan for the future. Expanding the Turnkey landfill is not solving New Hampshire's waste problem. When this landfill closes, whether it's in two thousand and twenty-four or two thousand and thirty-four, there will still be no plan in place to transition our system away from burning and burying our trash and moving instead towards a zero-waste future. New Hampshire needs a plan to reduce, reuse, and recycle our waste rather than doubling down on polluting. According to the state's own research, a fifty percent recycling rate could extend the landfill capacity by five years, and an eighty percent rate could extend the landfill capacity by thirty-five years. For these reasons and more, we strongly urge you to deny this permit. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, Ms. Colahan.
Okay, next, we will hear from Katie LeJoy, and on deck is Emmett Soldati. I just want to remind people that you can still request to give testimony. Do ask that you type in your name, the party you represent, and your address so that we have that for the record. When you speak, you only need to speak your name and the party you represent. At this point, I'd like to turn the floor over to Katie LeJoy. Ms. LeJoy, you have the floor.
Ms. LeJoy, can you hear us?
Ms. LeJoy, you have logged in multiple times. We have unmuted you, but we can't hear you. Make sure that you're, you are unmuted on your computer as well.
Can you unmute all other versions? Make this one more.
So. Ms. LeJoy, it appears that you are self-muted. Please make sure you are not muted on your computer.
Ms. LeJoy, we can't hear you at this point, so we're going to move on to our next person requesting to give testimony, and we'll try to come back to you. If you also, if you can either call or email to Meg King for the instructions that we gave previously, perhaps we can sort out. But we do have, we do show you as being logged in three different times, so that may, there may be some issue there. But please try to reach out to Meg King. We'll, we'll come back to you after our next testimony.
In case you don't, Meg King's phone number is six oh three two seven one six eight nine three. At this point, we're going to continue on with Emmett Soldati. Emmett, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. This is Emmett Soldati. I'm here representing myself. I mentioned earlier in the questions that I live about ten miles from this Turnkey landfill, but really five miles as the crow flies or as the pollution flows. And I'm here without the same expertise or activism that the previous public speakers have provided, but really wanted to add, as someone that is both local to this landfill, is a granite stater that is in my early thirties with plans to stay and live here for many decades, that we are bearing the brunt of artificially low-cost waste that I think we could be searching for solutions at a state level and at a local level. And so the concern that I have with this permit, with extending the life, is really that we are kicking the proverbial can down the road for an industry that is ready to move on, for an industry that is ready to provide new waste solutions that are more renewable, that are less harmful to our health and to our environment through, you know, recycling, composting, and overall reduction and reuse of goods. And extending this permit, I feel, gives waste management and largely the industry ten more years of boosting artificially inexpensive waste because we don't always see the expense. The folks that are ultimately putting waste into the stream that ends up five miles from my home, they don't bear that expense when they pay the low cost of landfill waste. And we need the state to lead on the issue of actually transitioning the industry, and that's not going to happen if communities like Summersworth and Rochester and Farmington have to house the pollution and the landfill while everyone else benefits from this artificially low cost of waste. When there is a whole industry that is ready and available to transform when, when landfills like Turnkey close and we shift to a more and we shift to a more renewable future. So as a local voice, I thought it would be important that someone that can, you know, have this landfill virtually in my neighborhood, I am concerned about the pollution, both today and in the future, and extending the life. One of the things I understood from my clarifying question is regardless of what the landfill gas generation has been projected to be, that we know that it will increase and not decrease. The curve will bend up and not down with this expansion. And that alone should be enough to press, press pause on this process and recognize that this isn't something that we regionally should tolerate, and the state should be protecting the sort of the interests of our local and regional community and our future health. And so that's why I wanted to call in today.
Thank you, Mr. Soldati. We appreciate your testimony. Barbara?
At this point, the only other person I have is Katie LeJoy. So let's see if we can try Katie LeJoy again. Katie, we are going to try unmuting you, and hopefully this time it will work. Katie, are you on the line?
It sounds like Meg's working on it.
I think she is there, though. Mike?
Ms. LeJoy, we can hear a little, some brief sounds, but we can't, certainly can't hear you speaking. I don't know if your microphone is working properly.
Telephone.
There we go.
I heard it was telephone.
Hello?
Hello? I can go check with me. If there's anybody else that would like to give testimony, feel free to type in your name and address into the question box. We can add you to the list while we're trying to resolve the technical issues with Ms. LeJoy. But at this point, I have no other people.
All right, we're checking with Meg. So we'll wait a minute or two here. And I'll remind people that you still, again, have one week following this close of the hearing tonight to provide us with written comments. You can email them to us. And we're going to give another minute or so here to try to see if we can connect with Ms. LeJoy. Ms. LeJoy, I know you may be working with Meg, but again, I'll restate that we have you showing three connections to us. I don't know if that has anything to do with the problems or not, but you might try disconnecting all three, and we're trying to reconnect them. We'll wait a minute or two.
Oh, we got a Meg has given us the message that Ms. LeJoy will be submitting written comments, and she appreciates us.
All right, so do we have anyone else after, after Ms. LeJoy?
No, we do not have anybody else who has requested to give oral testimony at this point.
All right, we'll give it another, another one minute or so just to make sure that no one else wants to testify. All right, then this concludes the testimony portion of tonight's hearing.
Oh, wait. We just heard from Katie asking if we can unmute her. Should we give her one more chance?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, we're going to try you one more time, Ms. LeJoy. You, you're unmuted on our end.
Go ahead. We still cannot hear you.
Oh, oh, wait. Are you there?
Ms. LeJoy, it sounds to me like there may be something wrong with your microphone because we do hear intermittent sounds and occasional word, but it sounds like possibly your microphone might be malfunctioning. So I think, I think we'll go ahead and accept your testimony via email. Thank you, and we apologize for the inconvenience. We're sorry we're not able to hear you. If you can still, if you can hear us, but I'm not, again, not sure exactly what's happening. But we will certainly look forward to your, to your testimony. And you can call, call Sheila directly tomorrow or you know, to provide the information that you'd like to provide via email. So at this point, as I stated earlier, I'd like to make a couple of notes, reiterate a couple of things here before we close. As stated earlier, we're extending the deadline for public comments for one week. That will be until 4:00 PM on Wednesday, October 28th, 2020. And to reiterate on the process moving forward, once the public comment period is closed next week, next Wednesday, DES has 30 working days to review all the comments we receive and issue a final decision. All those who registered for tonight's hearing and those who submitted written comments will be provided with a copy of the final decision via email. It will also be available on the DES website. Excuse me. Again, this concludes tonight's hearing. We appreciate everyone's time. And at this time, I close, formally close the public hearing. Thank you.